Good evening. Welcome to, welcome to the Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021 Buffalo Board of Education Work Session. The first committee up, I am Paulette Woods, I am Finance and Ops Chair. And our agenda today is a presentation from Dr. Cash and our CFO, Jeff Pritchard, update on our community hearings regarding our state aid and our ESER funding. Dr. Cash, you have the com.
Good afternoon, colleagues. I thought what we do this afternoon to continue to be helpful about the unfolding news of our unprecedented federal stimulus dollars and our state aid dollars is to have Dr. Will Karestis talk a little bit about the community hearings that we have been sponsoring to hear from our constituents. I sent you materials that have been expertly put together by Jamie Cohen. I thought she did a fabulous job in sort of organizing all of that public commentary into a way that we can at least examine it. And, and so I thought that was very helpful. And then Will can talk about what we've done so far and kind of where we're going, how we continue to be fluid with our community hearings. And then Jeff can come, as he always does at the start of those meetings, he talks about what the allowable use of these funds are intended to be. So I thought we sort of reversed the order, let Will give us the big picture and where we are and where we're going to continue to go. Cabinet will be in a full day retreat on Friday to continue to examine the guidance around all of this, around all of this. And we have a very full agenda planned for Friday. It's going to be excellent to come out, ready to go, ready to go. It's going to be the greatest year ever next year. So, Will, if you start, and then Jeff has five slides to share, and then that'll be our part of it, and then you can open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, and good evening, board members. I guess I just want to begin by taking a moment to thank our district team for their efforts around what is our first phase of ESER public engagement meetings. Director Jamie Cohen did an outstanding job facilitating the engagement. I want to thank Dr. Reynolds for her organization skills and her leadership, just in getting these meetings to take place as effectively as they did from a technical standpoint. Certainly, our CFO, Mr. Pritchard, for his clear presentation, that really meant a lot. I know to listeners who appreciated that clarity. Certainly want to thank Board of Education members who were able to attend. When you have encouraging words like you did at each of the meetings, it really does mean a lot to our stakeholder groups and certainly to this plan. But it goes without saying, just to kind of echo how Dr. Cash has framed this first phase of engagement, we really want to appreciate all the participation from our, so many members of the district community, whether they're members of a stakeholder group, they were just engaging as members of the public. You can see from the material that you received today from Dr. Cash, that just in this first phase of engagement, there has been a really rich and robust level of communication between the public and the district, which is of course exactly what we wanted. So this is the first of just many opportunities. We're very glad that the public is engaged at the level that they're at. Dr. Cash and I have just been discussing what would be in the way of next steps for ESER engagement. And parents and staff had kind of reached out to us and said, now that we've been able to give you our, you know, kind of our preliminary aspirations around this, once we see, you know, a framework or the preliminary draft of ideas coming from the district, we'd love an opportunity to respond to that. So in the summer, sometime, beginning sometime in July, we will launch another set of public meetings in which stakeholder groups and the general public will be able to respond to what it is that they're seeing emerging from the district. So that, that will give them an opportunity to kind of reflect and say, wow, you really captured what our aspirations were, or I don't quite see what, what I had suggested. Maybe you can help me understand what, you know, the district is thinking. So these public engagement opportunities become another opportunity to have good dialogue with the public. So we're really looking forward to what would be the second phase. And then there'll be some ongoing phases, as Dr. Cash has made clear, just throughout implementation of all of the programs related to ESER. So that, that about does it for me, Dr. Cash, unless something I missed that you want me to cover. You're muted, I think. Thank you.
Hi, I believe we have a hand from--
So you can engage the board at this time.
We have a hand from Board President Sharon Bell Cottman.
Thank you. So when are you going to engage the board in this process? When are you going to get our opinions on what we would like to see done?
Well, it's, it's anytime you want to. It's not about us not doing it. All of these meetings, there have been board members at the meetings. This is a work session. You can, you can sign up to do it today if you want. Whenever you want, you can do it. Whenever you want.
Okay, so originally, how it was presented to the board is that the board would listen in to their constituents to hear what they have to say. We would participate as little as possible, this is my understanding, and that then it would come back to the board for the board's ideas before you started planning. And so I'm, I'm trying to figure out, did I miss something? Because that, that was my understanding, is that the board would listen in to the three meetings, then it would come back to the board for the board's suggestions before anything was put together. Am I missing, did I miss that? But that's how I thought it was. Jennifer, you're shaking your head, so I think I was right, right?
I was actually just moving, I'm sorry. But I, I did, I, I remember that there would have been a piece where the board was going to engage with you all around that, but I don't remember the structure. So I do know there was conversation around that, just, I guess clarification is what we're looking for.
So board members, you need to speak up at this point. Are you, do you want to have an input in this prior to the conversations that are having? Because we were really clear that we were not going to take over the public stakeholders' meetings with our ideas. I need some feedback on what you feel is the situation here. Thank you.
Madam President, this is Will, and I know you and I did have a conversation just like that, and I do appreciate what board members did in the meetings, which was, you know, offer an encouraging word and kind of keep the momentum of public engagement going. What I might suggest is that one of the reasons Dr. Cash gave you that information today about what the public is saying is because he has set a priority for the cabinet to look at that information and really internalize it, because the public, we take the public engagement very, very, you know, to heart, and you may really want to look at that as you think about, you know, what type of platform you would want as individual board members, because there's, there's an abundance of riches in that information that could be very helpful to you.
I did take a look at it. That's why I'm asking for the board's input, because I was looking for a higher level of input in, in, in many aspects of it. I understand the basic understandings of what most people feel are things that we need to do and do better. I'm well aware of that. My particular concern is, is that how do we move this district and the resources that we have to the next level? Okay? And I feel that each board member should be able to put together their suggestions. You're not going to sit, we're not just going to sit here and not have an input. It's unacceptable for the board to read this and then not come up with some additional thoughts of their own. Each board member should have additional thoughts of their own in regards to how we can grow and, and make this process be a little bit better. I would rather do it that way than to do it the other way, and then when you come back with your ideas, we say, that's not what we wanted, you, you didn't bring us what we thought you should bring us or whatever. So I'd rather get the transparency piece out upfront, is what I'm suggesting. And I do expect each board member would have something to contribute to this, because that's why we were sent down here to make sure that we represent our constituents. So that's what my concern is. It's not that a reflection that you don't know what to do with the money, it's not anything like that. What it is, is that at this point in time, with this amount of money, I want to make sure that the residents of Buffalo, including this board, have something to say about how this money is being used. Okay? Because oftentimes, I don't necessarily think that we get it, oftentimes, about what's needed in our communities. So I need some feedback from board members. The public is watching, they want to know what you're thinking about, how do you feel about this?
Yeah, today is great. Today's a great time to weigh in.
Jennifer, thank you.
So if we're going to take some of this time to, to look into this, I do want to see, and I'm very curious as to when we see what the public has come up with and the suggestions, how we not only prioritize that across the board, across the district, but I think it will also be able to be broken down into specific, you know, we'll be able to see the inequities that maybe are in place that we don't even recognize according to what the public is seeing. So I'm looking to see what bubbles up to the top. My logistics mind is in play, like, you know, what is being prioritized by the public through all these meetings? I know we are supposed to have, and I'm not sure if it happened yet, a meeting with the student voice and also a meeting with our teachers, I believe you had said, Will. So when those meetings come into play, I'm very curious as to, you know, what bubbles up to the top with all of these meetings and setting, seeing what the priorities are, like the top five priorities that we see bubble to the top. And then I would love to be able to, you know, I would lend my voice, once those priorities come into play, and then see maybe if things that I, as a parent, would want to prioritize, are they present? Right? So I'm looking at this from both angles. As a parent, you know, as a soon-to-be grandparent, my daughters or my granddaughters will be attending Highgate Heights, and, you know, want to make sure that I get a major perspective of where this is going. I was just on a call with Local Progress, and first question everybody's asking in New York State amongst the elected officials and other school board members is, what is everybody doing with this money? And how are they prioritizing it? So I would love to get input as well from you all and, and use our district. I'm proud to say that I brought up to folks, and we might be looked upon in Buffalo as models, as our equity resolution has become part of our, you know, kind of accountability factor and how we hold ourselves accountable to everything that we look into. These public meetings that we have is something that is not being, you know, utilized in other districts across New York State, especially with the CFE money coming in. So this is actually a model, people would like to talk more with me, and I'd love to bring other board members into this, as to how we go about engaging community. We're doing great stuff, and, and I just want to put that out there, that literally less than a half an hour ago, you know, we've been looked upon as, as a district that's really doing the right thing as far as engaging folks. So I just want to put that out there, too.
Okay, we have someone's hand up in the, it's either Lou or Larry at the, at the boardroom, 807?
Larry, it's yours. Okay. So similar to what Dr. Karestis said, I'm in the phase of digesting all of this input from the public, and a lot of what I'm seeing so far are priorities of my own. And I think everybody at this table knows where my priorities are and where I want to see funding invested in. Mental health support for our students, restorative practices, reading and math specialists, smaller class sizes, summer school programming, which we are already investing in. And I think one thing I want to highlight is that if we're considering some sort of virtual academy, some full, full remote instruction to begin next year, that it be a separate program, its own program, staff, having its own staff, and we get away from the concurrent teaching model, especially if it's pertaining to reaching or related to COVID-19 and the pandemic. And if it's done in a supplemental way to get students ahead that maybe are prepared to take on more of that instruction beyond the daily instruction that they receive. And just for the record, I, you know, generally speaking, I'm for making sure, making sure that we are investing with services and staff for our students directly in the schools, directly in the classrooms. And I do not support what the Buffalo News Editorial Board recommended, that we devote some of this funding towards consultants.
Okay, so let me say something, Paulette, please. I don't, I don't want to put people on the spot here. I'm not interested in, you don't have to necessarily say what you want at this point. But I do want a mechanism in place by the end of this meeting that we report out some way or another, what our priorities are, if it's just your top five priorities or whatever, after you've looked at the list or whatever, or if you want to add addition, additional things to the list. So I'm not trying to put people on the spot. But I do feel that there's a need to have the board's input in this process at this point, somewhere before you go into your cabinet retreat or whatever, that the board's concerns should be also listed in those list of priorities. And that's what I, that's what I'm trying to do today. That's what, where I'm going with this. So I just want to be clear about that. Thank you, Larry, for sharing your priorities with us. But I don't necessarily feel that I want to, you know, you have to be put on the spot today, but I think within the next day, there should be something sent over to staff and that they should have an idea of where your priorities are with this. Okay? Because the last thing that we want to see is for the staff to come back with their priorities, and it's, it's not in agreement with anything that many of us want, which I don't think will happen, but certainly, because things have been known to happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Board President. We have Kathy Evans-Brown's hand up. Kathy?
Thank you, Chairman. Hello, everyone. Similarly to what President Cottman said, it, it just didn't seem like there was a systematic way of involving the board, because I, too, thought that we had the opportunity to listen in on the meetings. I do think that being a board member representing the East Side, we do talk to constituents who may not necessarily have been involved in these meetings, and so I do have, you know, some input, you know, from them that I would like to share as well. I'm not going to do that now, but I will.
Okay, we have, is it you, Lou? Your hand is raised. Someone in City Room 807?
Thank you, Paulette. It's Dr. Rivera that I had a comment afterwards as well. And the floor is yours.
So I, I really want to endorse the bottom-up approach that we're taking, and I think that President Cottman is correct, that the board needs to be a part of that as well. I think what I'd like to know in my own head at this point is what kind of information would be useful to staff before they go on a retreat on Friday? Is that the man's breast that they're going to be looking through all of this? And what kind of information would be useful for board members? Because as Mr. Cottman points out, a lot of what's on here, I already have as priorities, it's already been said. There are a few things that maybe I could add into it, but a lot of it is already there. So what kind of information might be helpful to the cabinet as they go on a retreat and consider this information?
Just to hear from the board. I mean, I never had any particular date from which to hear from the board. I thought it was fluid in my mind. We meet three times a month. I hear from Sharon on Fridays. Any of you can call and talk to me at any time. So we're in active mode now. We're in live mode now. We have a certain timeline, though, that does make the matter urgent. So we have to get a report in by the middle of June, and then we have to get another report in by the first of July. And so I look at all of these things happening concurrently, not necessarily in a linear fashion. I like the idea of putting your ideas into writing and sending them along to Will. And Will will continue to work with staff to put them into meaningful topical headings that the board has identified as priorities, and representing both the board members and their constituents. But I think you should be thinking about your constituents, of course, as you, as you respond. So all of this is fluid. I'm, you know, we, we've got an approach that we're going to continue to look at and have some structures that I'm putting the cabinet onto, and I will be sharing those with the board in probably the June meeting. But I don't, I don't think you wait that long. I think you either got to do something now and/or next week in order to devote some time to share with the public and with staff how you're thinking about this substantial influx of funds. I think you will find the structure that I'm developing with staff around thinking about this and, and how it will branch out into the community, how the community will have really, really substantive opportunities to partner with us around some intractable issues and concerns that affect the community writ large, which then also by extension and by deduction affect our children every day, every day, and they affect their academic success. So we have to address those problems as a whole community. And then there's some things that we got to address internally as, as a school system to continue to improve and go to the next level. So we'll, we'll be looking at all of that, and we welcome, we welcome the board's input. I just want to be real clear about that. But it's anytime, anywhere, 24/7. You know, we're looking to hear from you now, we're looking to hear from you all the time. So let's continue the discussion.
Thank you.
Dr. Cash, the information, I haven't had a chance to, to look at what you sent us today. Well, my understanding is that, Dr. Cash, my understanding is that the website, the community was given that if they couldn't get to log on, they couldn't go to the, to the Zoom meetings or Facebook meetings, because a lot of people don't have Facebook, that they were able to send their information, their ideas to an email address. Have you received a lot of information to that email address? Because I know a number of community agencies have indicated strongly they want to partner with the Buffalo Public Schools, especially to do outreach to students who may have disengaged, gotten a little discouraged, and weren't able to meet the challenges of, of remote learning. That is a big priority for me, that the community reach these students that have not met the challenge of, of being successful in remote learning. And I know the ideas the board has said, members have said, attendance teachers to reach out, but I strongly believe that partnering, partnering with community agencies, churches, nonprofit groups, whatever we have to do to reach our students who have disengaged and need to be re-engaged, that is the top priority, that we reach all students, for me. The other big priority for me, and I will, I will put it in writing, is that raising reading, that, that's, that the reading and the arithmetic, reading, writing, arithmetic, the three Rs, that's the basis of everything, and I, I will, I'll be reviewing to see how we are going to strengthen that component so that we address the learning loss that has just basically happened. It happens over the summer, and it certainly has happened over the last 13 months. So I will be looking at those, those suggestions and to see if agencies are on there, because we've got to raise the achievement level of our students and keep our students in public education in Buffalo schools, because we are excellent and we will even be better. That's my comments.
So Lou Pichucci's hand was up, please.
Thank you, Sharon. So what, the way that I kind of view this also is that we would, we would review what we collected from all the different partners and people that commented and participated, and that we as board members would kind of add and supplement to what they were suggesting would be their priorities as well. I do like the idea, Sharon, of putting it in writing and getting to senior staff. I imagine we are going, should we direct these to either Will or to Darren? I'm not quite sure who's going to be collecting these. But we can, you know, put together a short list that, again, that adds to what we've heard from the community and give them to the appropriate staff person.
Thank you. Can I say one more thing, Madam Chair?
Please, please do, Madam Chair, Board President.
So Dr. Cash, as you formulate these, would this also be SMART goals? Would they be also things that these ideas would also be able to be put in a, in a format for SMART, for SMART goals? So that we can measure, so that we, they're specific, measurable? What I'm trying to do, and I know you're aware of that, and board members, in trying to wait until after we get through this period with Dr. Cash and his evaluation, to move forward with the shared training from the Council of Great City Schools to start focusing in on being more student outcome focused as we move forward, so that we can monitor that. So I'm just curious to know if they would be SMART goals, I mean, or, or they, ideas that could be utilized under the SMART goal method, maybe is the proper way to put phases? Dr. Cash?
I'm not sure all of the feedback that board members may have about some priorities for children and young people can all be framed in terms of SMART goals. Certainly, academic achievement aspirations for our children can be framed that way, and, and some other things can be framed that way, but they're not necessarily going to all fit into that frame. So wherever we can, after, like you, you know, going into the new year, and especially during the three years that we have this extraordinary funding, we should absolutely be setting benchmarks and goals that are measurable in this SMART goal framework, you know, measurable, achievable, time sensitive.
Relevant.
Yeah, all of that. So let's see what comes in, and then let's, you know, I'll make that effort to, to put, put some priority ones into either buckets or into groupings, and let's see, let's see what comes up. I'm happy to, to be looking at it that way. I'm happy to be looking at it that way.
Thank you. And I want to go over what SMART goals are. It's an acronym for a specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-sensitive or time-bound. And that's what SMART goals are about, as we start focusing in more on student outcome, our outcome focus piece. So thank you, Dr. Cash.
So am I hearing, Dr. Cash and the Board President correctly, that what I hear you suggesting is that each board member, hopefully, can take some time to look at the material we've been sent, and tomorrow, Thursday, if at all possible, send three to five priorities that you have for this funding to Will or Dr. Cash in writing so that they can understand that these are our priorities. Many of them may be the same thing that has been presented by many of our partners, but can you give three to five priorities to give Dr. Cash and his cabinet some guidance for the Friday meeting? Is that what I'm hearing that's been suggested?
That's what you're hearing, and I would like it also to be categorized as board members' suggestions or input, not even suggestions, just board members' input. I want the public to see what the board members are thinking about and what are they doing, and how are they addressing it? And you do have another hand up.
Someone from A Room 807, is it Larry or Lou?
It's Larry.
It's me again.
Okay, Larry.
That's a question for Dr. Caressis. Just as far as process goes, as I'm looking through this, and yes, by the way, Ms. Cohen did a fabulous job in putting this information together. I'm just wondering, with some of the, many of the statements or bullets have a stakeholder group in parentheses. Was that submitted in the public hearings, or was that submitted in writing from those groups? Or a little bit of both? And I'm just looking at, there's one group in particular that seems to be suggesting things that are already happening and also suggesting policy changes that really aren't applicable to this process. It's one of our collective bargaining units. So just wondering on process, how this information was collected from those stakeholder groups?
Right, so most of the information you have in front of you came as a result of those two-hour meetings. We've had three of them, so, you know, roughly, you know, five to six hours of engagement and information. The email portal is 24/7, so we're getting information from that. And our stakeholders were sending in information as well throughout the process. So, yeah, it's ongoing. And what you have is pretty much a verbatim submission of what the public has said. And that was an expectation that Dr. Cash set, that, you know, we're not going to be filtering or doing anything with the information except reporting it back out and having that in a digest that we can all read in the same way. With regard to, you know, what you're thinking as far as the board submissions, you know, we'll essentially do it the same way. If you go to our website and you click on and you find where these reports exist, we'll now have another one that, again, categorizes it in these large buckets, but is exclusively from the Board of Education. So we'll easily be able to do that and accommodate that.
Okay, we have Terrence Hurd and Ms. McCozy with their hands up. Terrence and Jen? We can't hear you, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, Chairwoman Paulette Woods. My question is, you asked President Belton Cotman, what are we doing and how to address it? Is that something that you're saying, that you want the board members to act out of what to do? You said, what are we doing as each individual board members and how we want to address it pertaining to SMART goals and the work that's in front of us?
Are you speaking to me, Mr. Hurd?
No, I was speaking to our board member, Belton Cotman. She made a suggestion that we, each board member, answer the question, what are we doing? And how do we address it, or how are we addressing it? And is this what the board is enacted to do for the body of work that we're working with?
Okay, so I think you missed the part of it, so let's reframe it for you. So we have the stakeholders' ideas and suggestions that were presented by Dr. Cash. In addition to that, my question was, when will the board members have their input added in? And, okay, the superintendent had talked about on Friday, the staff is going into a retreat. And so I wanted the board members to speak up, so most of them did speak up, the ones who normally speak up, you know, spoke up. And they shared some of their opinions or whatever. But I wasn't trying to put anybody on the spot at this point. What I was trying to do was to get a period of time where we could, at least within the next day, port over our suggestions to the Dr. Caressis and make sure that and make sure that we have our input before the cabinet and Dr. Cash put their ideas together, and then we have a difference of opinion on certain things. And so in the conversation came up, I brought up, will they be measurable? Will they be SMART goals? I understand that all goals cannot be, will not be measurable. However, sitting here on the board, I'm thinking about the time where we went to smaller classroom sizes for our grades one through three, and we did not do measurable, we didn't get the results that we felt we were going to get out of that action. So to say small classroom sizes and not to understand that the goal behind small classroom sizes ultimately should be to increase your reading and your math puts us in a situation where if we get the small classroom sizes and we don't attach SMART goals to them, we don't end up with the results that we want. So as board members, we sort of need to be specific as to what we expect. If we're saying we want a small classroom size, what's the reason for the classroom size being small? Is it to improve learning? Or is it just that, you know, so I'm just trying to just give you some examples of just trying to move forward in a big way and making sure that we realize that anything that we put together, we need to be able, as a board, we need to ultimately tie in the student outcomes, that's all. And Dr. Cash and I have had this conversation, and we are going to be focusing in on more on student outcome as we move forward. Hopefully, this, I've had five board members to tell me that they are interested in doing it. So we'll be moving forward, you know, for the new school year, focusing in on more student outcome. So that's all, you know, ultimately, that's what this should be about. How do we make sure that student outcome improves by any action that this board does? That's what I'm looking for.
Okay, thank you, President Belton Cotman, and I do apologize, I was five minutes late. I had to log in on problems with my computer, had to switch to a different computer. But my question with that is that, because every district has different needs, different concerns. Each building has its own different array of challenges, you know, that persist in that building. So how will we identify the ones that's in most crisis through the parent, through the stakeholders' meeting, the report that came from it? I was just having trouble, I was reading through it, but I still have a trouble identifying the schools of needs and how can we enact those type of programs within each individual school? Because this is kind of like a broad perspective of all the schools.
I may be able to help you with that, Mr. Hurd. We are in the process of having a first look at all of our collated survey data. Remember, in addition to all of this information, we have an ongoing 24/7 survey that is disaggregated in all sorts of ways, not the least of which is by school, by board district, so that you can get a keen sense of what constituents are saying. So we will, you know, probably by next week, we will have an updated report that will be added to the wealth of this information. And I think that'll begin giving you a snapshot of what you're looking for that's, you know, personalized or individualized by school and by board district.
Thank you, Dr. Caressi. Thank you, I'm President Cotman.
Ms. McCozy, Ms. McCozy, your hand is up. Thank you. I have a question that was posed to me. I attended BPTO's meeting, monthly meeting, Saturday, and they wanted to know, and maybe Will, you can help with this, whether or not the suggestion that they had brought forth in the public hearing, do they bring that, because they want to make it official? Do they bring that board meeting to try and put it on the agenda? Does it stay in this realm as part of this community engagement? They want to formalize their suggestion. So do we keep it in this realm, or do they look to put it on the board agenda to present to the whole board?
My suggestion to the stakeholder groups, because they all kind of had that question, was when they're able to memorialize their recommendations in writing, we are going to add it as an addendum to each of those meeting digests. So some of the groups have already done that, we're in the process of adding it to that. So it becomes a part of the official record, and we see their recommendation in two ways. It's captured in one of those columns, in color-coded columns that you see, and it's also going to be an actual document. So some of the groups are just going back and taking another look at their documents, just making sure it's what, you know, is reflected from their constituency, and then we will add it. And that was an original arrangement with our District Committee of Stakeholders, because it's a great opportunity that we have these very active, engaged groups who want to contribute in such a rich way. We will actually post their recommendations as a separate column. That would be helpful to us.
Okay, I'll relay that, thank you so much.
Okay, we have either Larry or Lou from the room 807. Your hand is up, Larry, Lou?
You are wrong on both counts, Paulette, it's Ann, Dr. Rivera.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Rivera, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. So I have two comments to make. The first one is, I would support the ongoing programming that's been done in the district already. We have the education bargain, we have the equity resolution, we have these things that give us the areas in which we want to push things forward. And as I look through our stakeholders' comments, the vast majority of these, if not all of them, speak to both those things. And so to my mind, what this is about, and this speaks to President Cotman's comment about outcomes and SMART goals, outcomes are critical. SMART goals are really important, too. One of the things that I'd like to make sure that we have a discussion about and also that I'd like to support, because I know the district does do this on a regular basis, is to assess what we're doing now that works and how to expand it across the district in such a way that works in the district. And also to think about, when we think about outcomes and measurable outcomes, we're careful about when we're assessing those outcomes, because education takes a while to see outcomes. Students don't necessarily respond the first year out. We may see some benchmarks, to speak to what Dr. Cash is speaking about with benchmarks. Those can be done. As a board, I would really like us to be cognizant of that piece of it, so that we don't have a situation where we have an intervention that works, but it takes some time to see it work. I want us to think a little bit about where those SMART goals would be in terms of the in-between benchmarks as we work our way towards student achievement.
Dr. Cash, Will?
Can I speak on that? I agree with you, man.
Yes.
I agree with you on that. But goals are normally set for a three- to five-year period. Okay, the measurable are normally set for the short term. Okay, so yearly, you can measure six months, you can set up the measurable to achieve your long-term goals. And so I'm looking forward to us having those conversations, because we have not in the past. But yes, we're very much aware of the importance of making sure that we start with our, at our starting line, and that we measure moving forward and hold people accountable when we don't achieve, including the board. That's part of the process as well. So that would mean typically, a meeting like this, we would be spending at least a portion of it, a large portion of it, looking at student outcomes and our respects. Or for your particular meeting, Paulette Woods, we would be looking at the inputs, the money that's being spent to get the results for the outputs. So I'm looking forward to bringing us up on a national level with that. It should be very interesting. I think we have the minds here to definitely make it happen. I know we have the minds.
Will, Dr. Cash, and Jeff, I've been getting questions, and there's been a lot in the paper, about our buildings, is there money set aside in the ESR funds to make sure our buildings are, have the equipment, the filters, the masks, so that it's safe for our children to come back in the buildings and our teachers? And also questions about, is there money included for vaccinating the children and the teachers? So when you, can one or both of you speak about the monies designated to make sure our buildings are, you know, prepared to deal with COVID and any resurgences? And also vaccination of staff and students? So can you guys address that when you move to speak on the monies and in your plans?
Sure, the short answer is yes and yes.
Can you be, well, maybe Jeff can be more specific about if there's a certain amount, a designated amount? We know that 20% is set aside to take our students and address learning loss, but if there's a specific set aside designated for those concerns, the community is asking.
We certainly have the funds dedicated to both of those issues to make sure we have a safe start to the new school year. But we also will partner with the Erie County Health Department, who I expect will get, continue to get funds to ensure that there's ongoing testing and vaccination programs throughout the summer and into the fall. And then in terms of infrastructure dollars, there's another part of ESR funding that we anticipate will be coming, that is just specific for infrastructure. But some of the ESR II funds are also permissible to be used for upgrading facilities when there's a need. So that would be sort of how I would answer it. Jeff and I, we budgeted money for ongoing PPE and equipment and air fresheners and sanitizers and all of that. That was already here, and we have a lot of it remaining. And if the need arises over the summer, we'll continue to stock all of what we have made available this year.
And you're aware that the community, and one of my major concerns is, as always, full participation of both our minority businesses and women businesses in bidding and participating in anything that moves with Buffalo Public Schools, because all citizens pay taxes, all citizens want to participate, and all citizens need economic development and jobs.
Yes.
Board members, I see a hand up at room 807. Is it you, Ann, or?
No, we just didn't take it down, Paulette.
Okay, board members, any other questions before, I guess, Dr. Cash, you want our CFO to go into the next section?
Sure. Your, your call.
Can I reach out and say specifically that we use data to drive these decisions? That is my request, that, that the data, that we take ownership of the data in the district to drive the final results. That is my request. And that if a decision is made, that we have data to support why that decision was made. Thank you.
Karen Heard, you have your hand up? No? Okay, your hands down. Okay, Jeff, you have the com.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Paulette Woods, Chairwoman. The data that she was talking about, I believe, was the YRVS analyst and reporting data. And we should be receiving that back soon. I'm not quite sure when it's going to come back, but I know the Educational Support Committee will be presenting upon it once the final data comes back for that. And that'll be a good tool, that'll be useful to detect, you know, what's needed in our district and how we should move forward. So if we can get an idea roundabout when our YRVS analyst and reporting data comes back, I know Dr. Tanja Williams was working on that. But soon as we get that back, I think we can make a great and fair assessment about what's needed in this district and where.
That may come under social, emotional, or mental. But I'm also, a board member heard talking about the data, the basic data that is out there for every level, for every school. And Dr. Kay, we did not reach out to each school building and ask them specifically. Our ASLs did not reach out to their principals and ask them specifically what their school-based management teams are recommending? That didn't happen in this process?
It did happen. I met with principals in their ASL meetings myself. And I encourage them to participate in the process by having their constituencies in their local schools identify what school they're from, make sure that we're able to glean from their recommendations. You know, I'm from school 33, I'm from school 45, et cetera. And they have a number of ways they could do that, not only through the meetings and the email portal, but in the survey. So they, they had that, had that opportunity, and they'll continue to have that opportunity by school. One thing, just to be clear, Chairperson Woods, what will be helpful to our team is I'll send an email out to the board members that'll have key staff copied on it. If you have recommendations that you want to submit, just reply back if it's okay with the email that I'm giving you. That'll make it really efficient and quick for us to be able to digest your, put your recommendations in digest form like you see the other ones. And we'll have that assembled very quickly. So I'll be sending you that email shortly, and you will have that as a vessel to be able to respond.
Dr. Kresi, you had indicated that there's going to be a series of at least three more meetings, one for students, one for parents, and another one. Do you have any further information, dates, or anything, or is that coming in the future?
The third group is for teachers. Yeah, we will have that once, you know, there is information that is presented about what is emerging in the district framework. That'll probably be sometime in July. Our stakeholders felt that at this point, they've had some pretty decent opportunities to contribute information. When they begin seeing what the district is proposing or recommending, or what the priorities are of the district, they want to be able to respond to that. At that point, we'll convene those meetings so that it's nice and tight around what's emerging from all of these district recommendations.
Thank you for that update. Are we ready for our CFO's report, Dr. Cash?
Yeah, if you, if you feel you need it. Some of you have heard this before. It won't be new information, but certainly Jeff's prepared to do it. I do want to just reiterate for some of you who asked where to send your written comments, I'd like you to send them to Will with a copy to Darren and to me. Between the three of us, you know, we'll organize, collate, and all of those good things. So let's make sure that the three of us are on your communication list of priorities. Okay, Dr. Kresi, Dr. Brown Hall, and Superintendent Cash. Okay?
It's fine. I don't see our CFO.
Do you want to hear from the CFO?
Board members? I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay, Jeffrey? I'm hearing yes. I'm seeing Larry say absolutely not. Oh, my God, I'd rather be a dentist. But anyway.
No offense to you, Jeff.
We still love you, Jeff.
I think it never hurts when information is important to repeat it. So Jeff has five slides. He's very good at making it succinct, and let's let him do it. These are very important topics on the use of federal stimulus aid and state foundation aid.
And especially the building. I don't want anybody saying our buildings aren't going to be ready. Where's the money? Oh, please cover that one. Thank you.
Mr. Pritchard.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Cash. Good evening, board members. Admire, can you put up that presentation, please, and go to page two? While we're waiting for that, Paulette, the, the, the ESSER funding does allow, it does allow for utilization towards our buildings. So and that, that would be, it could be used for things to improve ventilation, to, you know, safety, for making changes that would allow for adequate spacing if we need to space students out. So we can absolutely use the federal funding for, for those related building improvements that are designed around getting students to, to come back, to come back into the school. There is no specific set aside at all in that. So there is, we don't have to spend a certain percentage. The recent guidance that the federal government just put out actually does kind of put some caveats on, on the building improvements and stresses that it, you know, they really do, you know, we don't want to necessarily spend so much on the buildings that we're not, that we're not spending it on programs for the students. And obviously, it all needs to be necessary under, under the constraints of COVID. So if we want to do things that really have nothing to do with improving the safety, airflow, spacing of buildings, and those might not be things we'd want to do. But otherwise, we can include facility improvements. And again, there is no dollar limit. There is no threshold we have to cross over in terms of a set aside or anything like that.
Some capital improvements are allowable?
Yes.
Okay, that, that was a question that, I forget what group asked that one. But, you know, some people think some of our buildings are older and may need some capital improvements. And I, I didn't know the answer to whether that was allowable. But thank you for that information.
Okay, absolutely. All right, so I'll try to go through these slides kind of quick. If, for anyone that has already been, has attended our, our public meetings that we've held, you'll, you'll recognize these slides because I'm really, I'm basically repeating them. For the most part, there's been a few tweaks as we found additional information. But, you know, this information really hasn't changed much in the last, in the last several weeks. So again, there are two large buckets of federal funding that we are now in, in planning stages for. So the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, the CRSA Act, which was signed into law in December 2020. We've been allocated 89.1 million in that funding source. The next one is the American Rescue Plan of 2021, also called ARP or ARP, that was signed into law in March of 2021. The funds allocated to the district here are $200.1 million. So together, it's 289.2 million. There is, and I put it in quotes, what was called a "learning loss set aside." That's not a term, a term that we like to use, but that is what's, that is the term in the law. And 20% of this funding that has been allocated to us, or about 40 million, has to be utilized towards that, towards that goal. And that, that includes things like extended learning times, summer, could be Saturdays, after-school programs, things like that that are meant to, to bring students back to, to grade level and hopefully above. The funds allocated to us were 90% of the funds that were allocated to New York State. So this federal funding, it's allocated to New York State. New York State was required by law to pass 90% of that to us and every other district. And that is what we've been allocated. The state is, is allowed to or able to retain 10%, which they have done. That funding will be used for other programs that the state runs, for administration. And some of that possibly could be, could be then shifted to school districts. But at this point, the only thing allocated to us are those two amounts listed above, which is 90% of the amount that was set aside specific to our students. These numbers are final as of May 4th. And again, these funds, they're, they're, they're referred to as the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, so ESSER funds. And ESSER II is associated with the CRSA Act. ESSER III is associated with the ARP. We, we have received the application for the ESSER II. That application is due on June 15th. So that's, that's coming up pretty quick. ESSER III has a two-part application. Part one is assurances, which has already been completed. And that is basically the district saying that we will utilize these funds for their, their intended purpose. Part two of the application, we have not received yet. That will follow, but we do not have it yet. This funding is grant funding. It has separate accounting. It'll have separate funds. It's not part of our general fund, it's not part of our general fund budget. The budget that the board approved does not include these funds in there yet. These are supplemental funds. Duration of the funding goes through September 23 for the ESSER II and September of 2024 for the ESSER III fund. So there's, there's quite a bit there. But that's, that's kind of in a nutshell, the funding as, as received. If we could go to the next slide, Admire, please? These, these funds have a, a very wide range of allowable uses. The Frequently Asked Questions document was just released last week by the federal government. In reading through it, it does seem to cover pretty much, you know, many, many things that, that folks have asked about. There are still certain things that, that, that we have questions on. And additional guidance will be released later. But a very wide range of uses under existing federal programs. So the Title Programs, IDEA, Adult Learning Programs. And this funding can also be used for anything up to and including what is necessary to maintain the operation and continuity of services in a local educational agency. So basically meaning that it could be used to avoid layoffs if that need ever arise. There's a process that must be followed to develop a plan, community engagement. We've gone through the first three of these meetings. And the ESSER III program, that's the one that actually has a, that we have to post a plan to our website by July 1st. So the ESSER II, we have to have an application into the Education Department by June 15th. July 1st, we have to have a plan posted to the web. I'm not sure when the, when we'll even have the application to submit to the state. But it, it will likely be probably after, after that July date. And in both of these instances, in our conversations with, they, they've, they've made it clear. They understand that these funds are multi-year funds. We have to submit a plan that includes all of the funds. If we fail to do that, we are essentially giving up those funds. So the plan that we submit to the state will include the full amount of the allocation. The state has made it clear they understand that there will be amendments that will be necessary. We will change the initial plan because things will happen over the coming months and in several years that will, that will necessitate changes. So the state has said they will be accommodative to that. Last little point on here below, the little table that I have below shows the federal stimulus aid that we have received so far. And the ARP, ESSER III, and the CRSA, ESSER II, you can, you can see that those amounts, 89.1 million, 200.1 million, I included them, just showing when the funding essentially becomes available to us, which is really in the 2020, 21, 22 years. So that's where I put it on there. Expect to see that whatever plan we have, it's roughly 300 million in those two funding sources. And, and they cover roughly three years. So you could, you could divide that by three. If we did something even, it could be roughly 100 million a year over the next three fiscal years. I highlighted in green the years that the funding can be used for. In yellow are fiscal years that there is a portion of the year, a small portion of the year that they can be used for. So that just, that just shows that. Prior to these two, the ESSER II and ESSER III, last fiscal year, the 2021 fiscal year, we received 29.7 million in funding under the CARES Act. So that included the ESSER I, and then another program called GEAR, which was a governor's fund. Those funds were utilized to offset a state aid cut. And they are expected to be fully utilized by the end of the 2021 fiscal year. We also received a sub-grant from Erie County for utilizing some of their CARES funding of 4.4 million that we had used by December 31st of last year. That was used to pay for a lot of the costs that we had for PPE, cleaning, sanitizing, equipment, some technology equipment in printing that we had to purchase to, to gear up for students' remote learning and, and so forth. So those funds were, were passed through from Erie County. We utilized those fully by the end, by last December. So that's, that's so far the federal funding. There may be additional funding, Dr. Cash alluded to it, related to infrastructure that could, that could allocate funds or potentially just borrowing capacity to school districts to, to, to make additional building improvements. But that's, that's down the road. We don't really have any information on that now. That's just in, in those infrastructure bills that are being debated in Washington, DC at this point. So if we could go to the next slide, please? This slide just kind of goes over some of the key considerations for developing the plan. I'll go over it pretty quick. You know, one, this funding is, is, it's three years in duration, but that is a pretty short period of time when you, when you think about, you know, the, the timeframes that, that we often think about. So we have to ensure that investments in using this funding can be sustainable with some other funding after, or that they are made with a, a specific termination date, that we, we understand that we will utilize whatever the funding is for, for a period of time. That period of time will end, and that funding will end with it. And hopefully, we've built that capacity into our district that will actually, that, that the benefits of that will not, will not end when, when the funding ends. Some of the things that we've looked at based on best practices and prior funding, federal disaster relief funding, is really this next item, and that's focusing on, you know, a few high-yield investments. We don't want to overwhelm schools with project after project, all too, you know, confusing, disjointed things. We don't want to overwhelm schools with project after project, all too, you know, confusing, disjointed things. You know, really probably want to think big and, and, and think of some things that are really going to yield that we can measure. Next bullet just talks about some of the, you know, goals and objectives for these major initiatives, clearly articulated in the plan, clearly articulated budget. Need to have metrics, benchmarks, targets that we can report on and measure improvements. You know, what is the return on the investment? Critical that it be equity-based. This funding is based on needs of students. Well, it's largely based on Title I. So student, student need, whether it be poverty, multilingual, other, other metrics and things like that. That's what's driving this funding. So we need to make sure that equity is the primary factor in how it gets allocated to students. Data, again, that's got to drive the decision-making. We've got a really good plan right now, the, the education bargain that we can use to, to essentially grow and expand upon for, for this. So that, that, a, a lot of what we do is probably going to be based on some of the things that we've already talked about through the education bargain. Course correction, that's important, too. We, we have to, you know, by using data, by, by looking back at it later, we need to make corrections in, in our budget going forward. Next bullet, compliance. This is going to be heavy focus of regulators, uniform grant guidance. That's, those are the regulations that, that cover all federal funding. We're going to be audited probably like we've never been audited before. And it may not be in the next six months, but in the next, in the coming years, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna spend a lot of time dealing with audits to make sure that this funding is being used properly. And again, that it's being used towards, towards yielding improved student, student achievement. So we have to be ready for that. And the last item on here is just really sequencing the plan appropriately. So we have to take the time on the front end to plan. And we have, also have to understand that there's a lot of school districts out there that are going to be doing some of the same things that we are. If we're looking to buy technology and every school district wants to buy computers, there may be a shortage. We've already seen the shortage of chips and things like that. So, you know, we have to make sure that, that our plan is appropriately sequenced to, to take advantage and to not, not get bogged down if there's shortages or things like that. So those are just some of the, some of the real high-level things that, that we've talked about at this point. Next slide, please? All right, so now we're going to change gears. So the, those first three slides, we're all talking about this federal funding. Foundation aid is the primary revenue in our general fund. That is the primary state aid that we have. I, I list in there projected foundation aid increases over the next three years, estimates for '22, '23, and '23, '24. In each of these cases, we are expecting at least a $10 million increase in foundation aid. And any school district that is receiving a $10 million foundation aid increase has to, similar to this federal programming, but this, this relates to our general fund and, and how we utilize foundation aid. We have to seek public comments from parents, teachers, stakeholders in, in a plan that is developed that takes and take into account their, their feedback. And plan, that plan has to be posted by July 1st of each of these three years. So we, we essentially have to take, in large part, what's already in our budget and in the education bargain and, and really enumerate it, I believe, for, to, to be in compliance with this particular, this, this particular change in law. Public meeting will, or meetings will need to be scheduled on this. And, and again, that's really probably this month. That, that plan has to be posted by July 1st of, of this year and then the next two years thereafter. So that's our foundation aid, foundation aid plan, which again is separate funding in separate fund. General fund is foundation aid, where the federal funding is our, our grants. This plan ties in with our general fund budget. That was, that was approved by the board a couple of weeks ago. Next slide, please? This will be the, the final slide. And it's just a bit of information for the board. If you're not already aware, the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority is, is in a, that's the control board, so to speak, for the city of Buffalo and all the covered entities underneath it. The, the BFFSA has requested that the superintendent and board president and other board members may also choose to, choose to attend a meeting with their board. Several years ago, I believe their board president had met with our board. This, in, in this particular instance, they, they've asked that, that our, our leadership meets with their board. This meeting has been scheduled for next Tuesday at 1:00 PM. And I, I base, I, I put an excerpt of their letter that, that really speaks to what they're asking about. And essentially, you know, they wanted, the, what they say in here, discuss, the discussion topics requested include the continued school reopening plan and related costs, projections for programs above and beyond those currently provided to address the achievement gap from the period of school closure, and the planned use of federal aid provided pursuant to the federal stimulus aid packages passed this last year. So by next week, we'll have a little bit more to talk about. But largely what they're asking about are what are we going to be doing with, with this federal funding? And, you know, they, their, their board has asked that, that, that the superintendent and board president speak with them. They also listed if there's other topics that, that we have that we can certainly bring them up with their board. So I, I, this, this slide is just to make all board members aware of that, that request and that scheduled meeting. And, you know, we'll, we'll certainly, I think, have a very productive meeting talking with the control board next Tuesday. So that, that is the end of my presentation. So thank you. If there's any questions?
Board members, Chair, Board President Kotman, has your hand raised?
So Jeff and Dr. Cash, what the fiscal planning board is asking for is prior to you finalizing your plans. I've never seen that done before. I'm, I'm really trying to understand what's going on here. I need Nate to give me some clarity here. So what you're telling me is that the state requires that we get this information to them by a date after this meeting. So is it possible that we will have that information for them? Okay, that's what I'm afraid of.
No, they're overreaching. You've got to understand, it's the Fiscal Stability Authority. They're overreaching, they're way out of their lane, asking all of those questions. And so I'm going to let them know as such. But we will have some ideas, certainly. You want to, if you want to share some ideas that, that, you know, you've been talking about with your board, like tonight, then they'll certainly hear that. But, you know, I'm not going to any Spanish Inquisition on Tuesday. I'm just not. And they have a tendency to do that versus asking us about making sure that we're going to be fiscally solvent over this time, you know? Now, I'll answer any question that they ask. That won't be a problem for me. But I just, I just know that right now, they're a soft board. And sometimes they want to act like they're a hard board. And you have to be ready for that, to say, look, this is your responsibility. This is our responsibility. And, and I'll be able to answer whatever questions they, they want to ask. But I wanted you to be ready, Sharon, so we have a, we, we should have a conversation so that you and I are on the same page.
Well, I think we're on the same page in that I've been sitting here for a while and I've never seen this come, or, or this approach. And my concern is, I agree with you. I feel that there appears to be a breach of, of, of authority here. And I need some clarity. And I would prefer that Nate provides me the guideline, or the board entirely, of the guideline that allows them to approach this in this way. If, if they were a state educating, education board, like the Board of Regents or the, or someone who knew education or the ins and outs of it, then I, I, I don't think I would be as taken back. But certainly, if our guy, if our plans are not required until, I thought you said, until, was it the 15th of June is in my mind?
July 1.
July 1, our guidelines are not required. So that's going to put us in a unique situation. And I'm not sure that this is not politically motivated. That's why I'm going to go on record to say. I have major concerns about this. And what this board needs to understand is that the fiscal, well, this board is a soft board. And now they breached into education at a level that I don't think any of them have EDs. So maybe one does. I think there might, was one. I don't know if he's even on there anymore. So I'm concerned about this. I have no problem meeting with them, but I'm, I'm very concerned about this approach at this point. It's, 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 it makes me feel as if this is politically motivated. And I, and I'm sorry, I'm going on record to say that. Okay, thank you.
Well, Board President, I, I think that we can very clearly have our, Dr. Cash and our CFO, we've given them our presentation that the Board of Education and the Buffalo Public Schools has a very prudent solvent four-year plan, which does not make, use make-believe revenues or unanticipated, unmeasurable revenues at the city. So I think they need to get their own house in order because ours is ten times better than theirs, and I have no problem with that.
And I'm looking forward to you on that team, Finance and Ops Chair for Paulette Woods.
I'm sure that Dr. Cash can let them know we are moving ahead and we will have our plans on time to be submitted in July to the fiscal authorities. And, you know, we have no problems sharing at that point with them. But as far as fiscally, Jeff Prichard has us right on with circumstances for our next three years, which is better than we can say for anyone else around here. So Jim McCossey, I see you.
Chairwoman, so I just want to make clear something for, just for clarity's sake. The, according to what you're saying, President Kotman, there really hasn't been an interest in anything that we've had going on with this board before. And Dr. Cash and, and Jeff, is this meeting coming about strictly because, you know, can we just safe to assume we got this, you know, these funds in, so now everybody wants to be in the mix? Is that how this is looking? I mean, you don't have to respond like the way I did, but I, I'm just, I'm curious. There's two things. What power does this board have in order to, you know, can they, can they put demands on money? Can they move monies around? What can they do, being the board that, you know, works with all the monies across all the entities? And my second question is, when we do present, as Chairwoman was put very clearly, that our stuff is intact and we're good to go and, you know, mine your own. But at the same time, that has to be kind of put in, in, I, I would like that to be, because I couldn't make that, I can't make that meeting. But I'd like for that to be pretty clear walking into this. You know what I mean? I, I just feel like it's enough with the okey-dokey. It's not, it's not a question politics are a play. It's not even a question. And Dr. Cash, I appreciate you and how direct you are about how you're going to approach this because we're very confident in where we come from and what we have to offer. But I guess my question is, now that, you know, now that there's a pot of money, people think they can throw their hands in it, and what power do they have to touch it? Can they, you know what I mean? Like, break it down for me, what power they have, if any, over the funding that's directed toward our students and our families in the city of Buffalo? Not so much anyone else's interest?
None, none, this is Nate Kuzma, none right now, Ms. McCossey. They, they don't have any of that authority. They're a soft control board. They're in essence opinion and advice only on that money. In terms of the meeting on the 8th, I'll have, you know, their, their authority is dictated by statute. So, you know, which is, based on my past review of it, is rather broad. You know, and Dr. Cash called it an overreach. It, it probably is, but I, I will certainly, it doesn't mean we shouldn't cooperate, you know?
Oh, yeah.
To the best of our ability. But I'll, I'll look at the statute and, and provide advice based on that.
And so the only time I ever remember this happening before was when Pam Brown was pulled in. And it was, it was political in nature at that point. Not to say this is political in nature. I don't want to imply, I don't want to say that unless I, but I do feel that there's something wrong here.
Well, they also, they, they entertained an awful lot of noise after the BTF contract settlement as well, which, you know, quite honestly, was an overreach on their part. And we know where that came from as well.
So just to share with the board, I did have a conversation with one of the, a while back, with one of the people who are a part of this fiscal board. And so my, my, I said to them, and, um, basically is, my, and this is before all this money was flowing in the district or in, in period, in the, in the states and in the country or whatever. My concern was, is that you have allowed a, a, a public entity to operate in, 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 in a deficit for six months for so long. And we have, and we are entitled to interest on our money and nothing has ever been brought to the table. My concern is, how, how are you operating when you are allowing, you know, the city to operate in a deficit at the time? Since then, I'm sure the monies have been replenished. And I haven't had, had an update from Finance, Extra Work near Paulette Woods in regards to what's going on with the city lately. But my concern was that, at that point, that you might be doing a little bit too much. And the only other time that happened that I remember was with Pam Brown. And it was a very ugly period of time and, in, in our district. And it was political at that point. So I'm interested to see how this is going to play out, for real, for real.
I hope they're expecting us to ask them about the millions that they receive from the feds and if maybe they can see their way to increasing their contribution to us in the future. Because that's the only conversation, I believe, that, that we have. They have plenty of money and we're educating the, the students of the future that will keep this community going. But we have other hands up. We have Terrence Heard and then, is it you and somebody from City Hall Room 807?
It's, it's Larry Paulette.
Okay, so Terrence and Larry, then Larry, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman Woods. I know that the fiscal board is supposed to monitor fiscal operations, conduct audits and identify budgetary problems and correcting those issues. But what was their reasoning for reaching out to the Buffalo Public Schools with the funding? Can you give a description of what actual reason why they asked us to, to join into the meeting?
Jeff, you got anything? The, this meeting is not specific to the, to the federal funding. It's just now that, that the timing is such that we've submitted all of our regulatory requirements up to and including the third quarter of the 21, 2021 fiscal year, our budget and our four-year plan. So they've already seen those. I think they've said they're all in compliance with all the requirements. Previously at their board meetings, some of their board members have said, hey, how is the Board of Ed doing this under the, because of the COVID closure? Why, what are they doing here? So that's where they said, you know, we should really, we should ask to have the, the superintendent and board president come and speak to the questions that they have. So that's really the, the rationale for this ask. It, it just so happens that in the intervening time, we're getting allocated all this federal aid. So now that really, their questions are based on, or, on what, what are we going to do with this federal aid?
Okay, thank you. Is it possible they reached out to the? Is it possible they're reaching out to this district for help, like in the, like in the past before, just they see funds coming in for program education? No. Okay, that was one of my concerns. Also, maybe while we're here, they can explain what's going on with the, all these school zone tickets that I keep receiving complaints about, and where that funding going to for violations. I've received hundreds of complaints about school zones, and, and the paper was kind of misterscrewing about, about whether or not the cameras are active or not active, or whether, whether the tickets are going to still uphold. So I still receive a lot of complaints about that. So maybe get some track on that funding and what's going on with the camera system with the school zones.
And thank you, Board Member Hurd.
Hundreds, hundreds of complaints, comes all the time, and something really needed to be addressed with this.
Thank you. Board Member Scott?
So the meeting on Tuesday, is it virtual or in person? Is it, and is it a public meeting?
It's a public meeting, and it's, it's, it's virtual.
It's virtual? Because I'm not finding any public notice, and usually I get, or we all get, a meeting notice from the B F S A, and I don't have anything in my inbox. Can, can the details of that be shared? Because I, I would like to attend, and I would encourage my board colleagues to attend as well, so that we can show some support, you know, unity in support of the district and our budget and our finances.
Jeff, do you know if they do a 48-hour posting, somebody?
Yeah.
Do it within a 48-hour timeframe? So maybe that, that information is, is yet to come?
Yeah, they're, they're preparing a board packet, if you will. And typically, I just went out to their website. Usually by like Thursday or Friday, you know, late, late in the week previous, they'll have posted on their, on their website, the actual meeting details. They're not there yet, but I suspect that within the next day or so, they will, they will publish that. And then, and then I think they do send out a blast email to, to a lot of folks that would normally attend.
So when they do, Jeff, could you make sure the board gets that?
Yes.
So originally, this was supposed to happen back in May, right, Jeff?
Uh, March.
March, okay. And so then they moved it to June. Okay.
Yes.
Something came through, I don't know, recently, I'm not sure, I'm looking for it now.
So can we make sure those two issues are added to their agenda? The important, our earning interest on the funds they use, or if their plan for funding the city of Buffalo now will fiscally balance with all their federal aid, or they won't be dependent on the Buffalo Public Schools to carry them in their cash flow statements? Can we add that? And the question about the revenues they're receiving from the school zones, if, if some of it's going to be shared since it was generated for Buffalo school students' protection and safety? So Ms. Scott, Board President, can, can you send us those two questions?
Can we do what? Are we supposed to submit to questions in advance? Is that what we're supposed to do?
It said if there is, the blurb said if there's anything else that we want to add, if they're going to give us their questions, they said if anything else we want to discuss, we can send them a couple of questions also. Dr. Cash and Board President?
Whatever you feel is necessary, just, let's work it. I'm going to send out to the board the original, well, the notice that I got in May. And this meeting has been now changed to, I have on my system, on my phone, in my calendar, June 8th at 1:00 P. M. Is that right, Jeff? I mean, one, yeah, 1:00 in the afternoon.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So I'm just going to send you what they originally sent me back in May. This was the second one, they originally, excuse me, I shouldn't say originally, they sent this in, in May, after sending one in March. And my question is the same question. So I guess they waited until after we did our budget in order to, I guess that's what they're doing, so.
Board Member McCosy, you have your hand up? And again, we have someone up from Room 807.
I just wanted to address a message that I just received. Somebody isn't very happy with the comments I made, that saying this was politics, it's a little ridiculous. But I'm going to publicly state, when you make moves that look shady, I'm going to call them out. It's my job. So this meeting, now that it was, it was said, it was said in the message that the meeting was planned before the money had come through, and now that's just a question. I won't apologize for making that assumption, because unfortunately, these aren't very, these meetings aren't apparently what we do as a routine, and it's just the way, you know, the city is perceived, and we need to work together to change how that looks. So I'm addressing that, that text message publicly. Thank you.
Board Member Sharon Belton, you have your hand up?
No, I thought you had a hand up in City Hall, no?
No, it went down.
Okay, so I will say this much. In the letter, or what they're talking about, you have a board that is responsible for the fiscal stability of this, of this area, including the city of Buffalo as well, asking us questions that are asked by the Commissioner of Education. New York State Commissioner of Education and, and the state, as well as now with the funds that are coming, the federal aid, will also be a part of that reporting out. You have an organization that is responsible for fiscal stability, asking us about academics. Okay, that's where we have the issue of where are the politics being played here? Okay, all right. We have already said on record, Jennifer, Board Member McCosy, that this originally started back in March, it went back to May, then they moved it to June 1st. Now, they asked us June 8th or June 1st. So my point here is simple, okay? If the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority was responsible for the academic piece of this region, then we should have had these conversations before. So you don't have to apologize for making the statement, okay, because it's a concern, and we're not going to play the, play these games in regards to this. We will answer any questions that are put before us, we will come to the meeting. But I, my question, or what our concern is, is you are asking questions that are under the purview of the Commissioner of Education for this state. And I didn't know you were elevated to that point, and that's what I think we're talking about here, okay? So that's what the concern is. So thank you, Board Member McCosy.
Okay, and as, as previously stated, our sound fiscal four-year plan has already been submitted. Our, our, our year-to-date third-quarter expenses have been submitted. Buffalo Public Schools is fiscally sound, and we have no problems asking questions about our excellent control of our finances, revenues, control of our expenditures, and our reporting.
And let's go on record to say, we are equally, if not more so, concerned about the academics of this district. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
Okay.
I think we had the meeting already. We don't have to go on Tuesday. We'll just play this recording to them, and we're good.
That's very good.
Any other questions? Dr. Cash? If there's no other questions for Board Members, Dr. Cash, you want to, anything else you want to say before we close out Finance and Ops? I believe we have another committee meeting. I'm sorry, Lou, we went over time.
That's okay.
I think we're good from our staff end.
Okay, Board Members, this concludes the Finance and Operations meeting. I hand it over to Lou Potuski for Executive Affairs. Take care.
Thank you very much, Board Member Woods. At this point, may I have a motion to go to Executive Session for the following purposes? One, to discuss collective negotiations with the Buffalo Educational Support Team. Two, to discuss collective negotiations with the Buffalo Association of Substitute Administrators. Three, to discuss the potential appointment of a specific corporation. And fourth, for, for the purpose of receiving legal advice. May I have a motion, please? So moved by Mr. Hurd. Do I see a second by Jen McCosy up in the corner? Thank you, Board Member McCosy. All those in favor signify by raising your hands. Any opposition? Hearing none, I think we're good to go, Nate.
All right, make it easier, I'll just make my way up there and see you all momentarily.
Sounds great. Thank you. Systems. I will tell them here to prepare for Executive Session. All right, thank you, everybody. The Board of Education went into Executive Session to discuss collective negotiation with the Buffalo Employment Support Team, to discuss negotiations regarding the Buffalo Association of Substitute Administrator, to discuss the potential appointment of a specific corporation, and for the purpose of receiving legal advice. No decisions were rendered. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved by President Kotman, with a second by Jen McCosy. All right, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.